For the town of Eastham, today is June 6th, and this is a partially remote participation meeting. The members of the board are gathered in the Earl Mountain Room at Town Hall. Applicants and the public may participate in person here or online through the Zoom app or by phoning in. This meeting will be live broadcast on local access channel 18 and streaming on the town website. Under the executive order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law signed by former Governor Charlie Baker on March 12th, 2020, all members in any meeting of the public body may participate remotely. I'm Joanne Verlinden, Vice Chair at the moment of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and with the help of my colleagues here, I will be leading the meeting tonight. Before we begin, allow me to explain the procedures we'll follow as we proceed through the hearing. I will introduce the cases to be heard, name the members of the board who will be seated on the case. That will be followed by a presentation either by the applicant or the applicant's representative having to do with the nature of the case and the reasons for requesting either a special permit or a variance. Following that, board members might want to ask questions on various aspects of the case. At any point in this whole process, an applicant or the applicant's representative may request a continuance to make appropriate revisions to the application. If a hearing is to be concerned, to be continued to a later meeting, a motion is required and shall contain a date certain for the hearing to be resumed. When board members have finished with their questions, we'll open the meeting to butters and other interested members of the public to hear their questions or concerns. When we have finished with that part of the meeting and it appears there will be no more questions, we'll close the meeting to the public. The board then might discuss the application, and we will, when ready, proceed to readings of the finding of fact and conditions. And of course, the last order business will be to decide whether to approve or deny the applicant's request. So our first case tonight is a continuation of case number ZBA 2024-2, which is being continued from May 2nd. 15 Beach Plum Lane, map 13, parcel 184, Karen Johnson, 2016 revocable trust, who was the owner and applicant. She seeks a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts general law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Eastham zoning bylaw, Section 19.2, nonconforming uses buildings and structures, and Section 7.2.4 setback requirements to demolish the existing dwelling and build a new two-story residential dwelling. The property is pre-existing nonconforming to minimum rear and side yard setbacks, and a vote will be taken. Mr. Zender.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Ben Zender. It's nice to see you all again, and I'm here with Peter Haig, who's our project architect on my right hand, and on the line is Laura Kelly, our landscape designer, as well as Karen Johnson, the owner of the property. You all may recall, on May 2nd, when we were here, there were a number of concerns that both the board members had about the project, as well as some of the neighbors in the neighborhood. And primarily, those concerns had to do with lighting, the number of decks, the encroachment of the deck on the north side of the property to the property line. And so what Peter did with Karen, or Karen did with Peter's help, was to do what I would consider to be a substantial revision of the architectural elements of the property. And you all have in your packet the new elevations of the structure. They've removed the tower, they've removed the roof deck, they've removed the lighting for the stairwell. The deck that is, the deck that is on the roadside, they have removed any access to that deck so that nobody can go out on it. On the waterside deck, they have a chimney element that screens the deck from the neighbor to the south, as well as planters in there to screen the deck to the south. They've pulled back the wraparound deck that wrapped around the house on the north side so it's even with the house, and placed a discreet rinse area in that area, so you walk out to the rinse area to get to that. They've removed the shed structure on the south side. So there's been, there's been a substantial reworking of the project to reduce the visual scope and the massing, as well as the opportunity for light to escape the house into the neighborhood. When you look at the window schedules, they're very, they're much more limited. Additionally, working with Laura Kelly, Peter's prepared a landscape plan showing the landscaping of the trees to be removed and the trees to be retained, and you have that plan in your packet as well for the, and also for the planning board's review. They've incorporated a turning area within the driveway so people can come in, can park and turn their vehicles, and get back out onto the small lane without interfering with traffic. So I, and again, it's my opinion, you know, but I think they've done a yeoman's job in reducing, you know, the scale of the massing, the light spill, the intrusion, the privacy concerns that the neighbors had for the project. So I'm hoping that with these changes, the members feel that it is now in a form in which you can grant the special.
I agree with you. It's a massive change, and we appreciate that.
My final comment is, just so the board knows, is, you know, simultaneous with the filing of these applications, we submitted them to the neighbors. Mr. and Mrs. Wilcox were gracious enough to give me the contact information, submitted that information, received back some comments from them, which, you know, I'll let them make their own comments, the board, I don't want to speak for them. As well as another one of the neighbors that painted my email address, received my information, I gave her the plans as well. So I'm hoping that everybody's had a chance to get a good look at them. I know that your town planner has submitted a revised staff report on this, so again, we'll answer any questions. Yeah, thank you.
Questions, board members, comments?
The same comment is that I also agree, I'm impressed with the amount of changes that the applicant has made, and it's, you know, looks really, really good to me so far. So let's hear what the neighbors have to say and other participants.
Anybody else?
No.
I agree, but I would like to hear what the neighbor has to say.
Yes, absolutely.
Hi, I'm Allison Wilcox. My husband and I live at number 13, and we were at the meeting last month, and we just want to say we did review the plans. We want to thank Mrs. Johnson and the architects and everybody for the work that they did in substantially changing those plans. We definitely like that you listened to us and heard what we had to say, especially about the privacy and the windows and the light, and we appreciate the changes that you made. And also, I think we addressed the placement of the air conditioning units outside as well on the side, appreciate that. And so I think that the only question that remains for us is, and this is for everybody in the neighborhood, is just the exterior lighting. Just if other neighbors have something to say about that, I welcome those comments, but otherwise, we really appreciate what you've done.
Okay. Excuse me just a minute before, I forgot to mention, seated on this case, Doug Bird, Bob Sheldon, Martin Ridgeway, Ridge, and Justin.
Justin.
I'm sorry, Justin, and myself. Okay. So the thing that you're still concerned about is lighting, is that, am I understanding that?
We were concerned with the lighting from two perspectives, that from the windows and the light escaping from the inside, as well as the exterior lighting. I know there were a lot of lights we talked about on the roof deck, which is now gone, which has reduced the exterior lighting, but I wasn't sure if I saw in the plans what the new plans for the exterior lighting were, just addressing everyone's concern about the darkness on the street. That was all.
A question, Ben, on last month's application, there was a extensive lighting plan.
Yep.
I don't know if that was part of this week's package.
It was.
No.
Yeah, I thought, I thought we should, but I'm trying to put my hands up. Peter can explain the lighting.
Peter made some architectural design. And to summarize the concept, essentially, there's a light at every door in the part of the building. But as far as outside lighting, there is low-level footlighting, like below the seat of the bench, discreet lighting that just sort of throws light onto the deck so you can find your way. There are some very small, like quarter-sized, dime-sized, quarter-sized lights in the risers of the stairs going down, first of all. Also, in the posts upstairs, there's those small little footlights in the posts. There is one sconce on that deck above, but there's a door, so you have to have a light at your door. The light is very modest. There is one light, it's a small light.
Thank you. There is one small light in the, in the outdoor shower, just to help you find your towel, but it's very, it's very discreet. As far as lights from the windows, there's, we've taken the windows out of the towers gone, so the windows that were causing some offense are gone. There's just a single window there, just like any other home would have. Light will come out the windows, but nothing unusual, so.
Thank you, Peter. I agree. I think having, having the roof deck gone eliminates a lot of the light. The tower portion of the building gone removes most of the light that's coming out. And from what you've described, it's the exterior lights, it sounds like typical lights in the, and, yeah, I think that's, that's good. Thanks.
Yeah.
Well, also took, well, I should say, we also took away the post light.
Yes.
And it would probably just some low-level solar landscape lights at the ground.
All right, I think there's somebody else.
Hi, everyone. I don't know if you can hear me or not. This is John Wilcox, Allison's, my wife. I just wanted to be, I guess elaborate a little bit. Allison and I are not lighting experts, and so we've never done this process, and so I think we just wanted to make sure that it was at least something that I know, I know Mr. Zender and Mrs. Johnson were obviously conscious of, but I would say almost a little bit deferring to the board, as people have gone through this process before. I think that's partly why we wanted to raise it as well, is we don't know what, you know, what appropriate lighting is or not based on floor plan, so I just wanted to add that commentary more than anything else. Thanks.
Any questions or comments from the board? Before we go.
I will.
Yes, okay.
So Ben, from some of the correspondence we've gotten from the neighborhood, when it comes to the right-of-way, the footpath to the north of the property, which we're aware of, are there plans to have that secured with some sort of a snow fence, you know, to make sure that during the construction phase that that stays open to the public?
I don't think there are any plans to secure it open. I think that, well, not I think, I know that, I know that Karen has an obligation not to block it, you know, that would be a violation of the easement, so.
So what I would ask is that there's, that there will be a condition that will require a physical barrier of some sort of a snow fence, because we all know during construction site, when the guy comes to drop off your framing kit or whatnot, he's putting it where he sees on the lot. So I'm just asking that the pathway be clearly designated as the right-of-way, so that construction debris, construction workers, the dumpster doesn't get dropped off on top of it.
We have no problem with that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you would, but I think that.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be surprised, because that's been a concern at least to of the correspondents.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly, we could certainly have it staked, you know, have it staked so that, so that the right-of-way stakes, and with a, with a condition that I block it, I don't, I don't think there's.
I was only asking for a snow fence.
Yeah.
Something at the edge of the.
My concern is, there's people that are a block away are going to send their two kids to the beach.
No, I understand.
And right now, they're going to be within four or five feet, they're going to be walking right by construction material and equipment and so forth.
If Karen's okay with that, I'll let her try. If she's okay with that, that's fine. I don't think that the, the, which would be involved in protecting private property rights as part of their approvals, but it's a small thing, and I think it makes sense.
Yeah, that's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Okay.
If the board wants to oppose it as a condition, that's fine.
Yes, I think we probably will.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, let's, let's go then to the proposed findings of fact, Justice.
There was, there was one more concern.
Oh, what?
I was hoping somebody else would bring up.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
Another one of the concerns we had from, a letter from one of the neighbors, was concerning the cobblestone apron, and that the cobblestone apron is clearly, from the landscape design, a good 10 feet beyond the property line.
Mm-hmm.
I assume it's lining up with what's there as the road.
Yeah.
And, so in one or two of the letters that I've read, there were people concerned about extending hardscape out onto the, towards the public way like that.
First of all, that's where it is. Yeah, I mean, the applicant has no right to construct hardscape in the public way. The applicant has a right to create a connection.
Right.
Because you have to remember, the public way extends further into the property than, than the, than the improved portion of the public way. So the applicant has a right to create a connection into the public way to connect the property to the improved portion of the public way. The town has regulations as to what those have to be, meaning your grading and your drainage and everything else, so. But if you want to impose a condition that the applicant not create any hardscaping in the public way, that's fine.
Mostly, I wanted to bring it up on behalf of the neighbor that sent the letter who couldn't attend today's meeting.
Right.
So I wanted to hear a little bit of an explanation or discussion around that. I can't really say and look and say, are you pushing the driveway out? You know, because these narrow roads, everybody needs a place to pull over to let each other go by, and is this removing one of those spots by saying, this is now my driveway? Or is, you know, I'd have to look at it, but that's the.
Yeah, I mean, you're, again, I'm issue spotting the statement, because there are a lot of things that we unpack in that. First is that you can't block the public way. You know, building your apron out to the improved portion of the way doesn't block the public way. I think that regardless of what your improvements are, people really shouldn't park to block your driveway. Whatever license you issue, it gives the applicant no rights to take any portion of the public way for their own. They can't do it, they simply can't do it. But if you're going to impose a condition.
So can't she, can't she just stop the cobblestone driveway part at the edge of the, of the property line, just right there at the edge of the road?
But you have to remember, nobody does that. And the reason nobody does that is because you have your property line, you have the road, and then you have, you have the unimproved portion of the public way.
The easement, yes.
And you have to connect it to the road somehow, so.
We're not, we're not looking to make new precedent here.
Yeah, I don't think you want to say that. I, I think that, again, I think you're wandering into, into property rights as opposed to, you know, scale massing, traffic safety and all that, so.
I'm also advocating for people that wrote letters.
Understood. I mean, any condition that prohibits the applicant from, from creating landscaping or hardscape in the public way is fine, but I, the problem with that is that as you go down that street, I guarantee.
Somebody else.
Many of those homes have improvements in the public way. They have mailboxes, they have split rail fences, they have lawns, they have, that's what people do, they build out to the improved portion of the way. So you're going to be creating a limitation on the use of this property that probably doesn't apply to the rest of the properties in the area. Everybody builds out to the improved portion, whether it's public or private, that's what we all do. So I, you know, a condition that they should not block at passage, that should not, I have no problem with that.
I'm not, I'm not proposing any additional conditions.
Limit passage in some way, you know, because even the, the landscape plan shows whole trees in the public area.
They're probably existing, yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they are.
Wars have been fought over what people are allowed to do with the limits of the way.
Yes, yes.
We have enough wars, we have.
All right, so we'll close the.
I wanted just a little bit of clarification for myself, some stuff I'm just not sure about. If I'm reading this plan right, there is an eight-foot wide walkway.
Yes.
I believe four feet of that is on this property, and four feet is on the property to the north. Am I, am I understanding that right?
That is correct, yeah. The property line straddles the walkway.
Yeah, so then my question, this, in this, maybe it's even going beyond the scope of this particular case, but just from my understanding, I know also in town, we have, we have a six-foot wide no-clearing zone at the edge of the property.
Yes.
What is the interaction between a six-foot wide no-clearing zone and a four-foot wide right-of-way at the end of it? Do I, do I have to not clear four feet plus six feet?
No.
Or do I have to not clear six feet, meaning there's only two feet of not-cleared space there? Because this right-of-way is clear.
Well, you have to remember, there's two things going on here. There's, there's a public regulation that limits what you're allowed to clear relative to your boundary line.
Right.
And then there's the private property right of the right-of-way that straddles the boundary line. So they're a little antithetical, because you can't block that way. You don't want to have trees in the right-of-way, but at the same time, the bylaw says that you have to do that. But the bylaw does, I don't think the bylaw would permit the town to adjust that inward to say that you now have six feet of limitation.
Sure.
The path is already clear.
That's it, you're not clearing it, it is clear, right?
They're almost, they're almost.
The front of, the front of my yard is totally clear, I'm not obligated to.
They're almost logically inconsistent.
Let it grow.
Okay, that, well, that's kind of what I was hitting
on. And then, again, if I'm getting way out of scope here, somebody slow me down, but whose responsibility is keeping that way clear? I mean, I am, I'm sure that the applicant is probably responsible in terms of construction mess during construction.
You're talking about the footpath?
I'm talking about the footpath, yeah, keep that clear. But I walked it today, and I was just curious, especially if you get, now I'm really getting out of scope, when you get down the next block towards, towards the ocean.
No, they're interesting questions.
Like, it gets, it gets this wide. Who's responsible for this?
But, well, if you think about it, they're not really responsible to do something, their covenants against doing something, which means that the owners of these two properties, their predecessors granted a right-of-way or to other people to use their land for this purpose, which means that there's no obligation to maintain the way on anybody's part, but there's a negative obligation on the part of those real owners not to interfere with people's ability to pass.
Somebody's walking down there, I can't say, hey, get out of here.
You can't, well, you can't get, to get out of here, and also you can't put a fence.
I can't, I can't build a fence across it.
You can't put a fence. And then the other corollary that comes out, there's, there's this decisional case on Massachusetts that says that when you have an easement, you know, somebody gives you an easement for access to your property, a roadway easement, driveway easement, you have the right to take all steps that are reasonably necessary to exercise that easement. And that, for example, you could trim back brush or anything of the way.
So somebody else.
You can fill potholes, you can.
Down the street who uses the path might come in
You can.
On the path and clear a few things, and that would be.
You can, you can fill potholes, you can, you know, you can clear back brush. Now, again, wars have been fought over the person that wants to pave the easement, the person who owns the land that doesn't want to pave. I mean, again, what's reasonable is for the court to decide, but for this particular scenario, the only real legal limitation is that these two owners can't interfere with people's ability to pass and repass.
Okay.
Negative consequence.
Okay. So that clears it up enough for me to understand what's going on in this room.
I love to talk.
Not, not to belabor this, but I just had a question. So the, the public way on Beach Plum Lane, there's a large body of kind of growth in there.
Yep.
That provides a lot of shielding for the house. Based on what I saw, Mark, I'm assuming that's all staying?
It is.
That's what I thought.
If I could just add, and maybe Laura or Karen may weigh in here, the intention is there are a lot of trees that have choked out one another. You probably, if you walk through there, you could really see that.
Right.
So there was the intent to thin that out.
Yep.
To give precedent or opportunity for the better trees. Similarly, along that, along the dirt paths to the north, was there, there would be some cleaning up of mess, but there, the intention is that we're keeping that six-foot untouched and cleared area. I would, what I would suggest, going back to the point that we were just discussing a few minutes ago, was that actually the silt fence, for now, be put at the six-foot line for protection of the, of the barrier. And then secondly, there would be some working in that six-foot zone to clean up the, some of the trees, and Laura may be better able to talk about that, but that was, we did walk through extensively and to save the best trees, and that's what you see in here, and the undergrowth will save and probably supplement as well, because it'll be in, in, Karen, our client's best interest to have some screening on that side.
Right, okay.
I, for one, was okay with the amount of trees and the tree work happening. I think there's enough vegetation staying on the site for, for the house.
Yeah.
To continue my advocacy for some of the other letters that we received, other people were asking about construction timelines. We had a request to not allow construction during the high season, and we also had another request asking about this particular summer, whether construction wouldn't start until September 1st. Do you have any target date, if everything is approved, when the earliest construction could start?
Generally, almost all my clients, without exception, would want to start construction in the fall so they can utilize their homes until then. And I'll let Karen weigh in on this, you know, in terms of, you know, delaying construction until then. I have a problem with blanket prohibitions like construction in summer months, because, again, your contractors have to be able to work that. Sometimes you get, that's the way that, that's the way it breaks. So, but I, I'll let, I'm going to ask Karen to speak to that, if she's willing to.
Sure. Hi, hi, everybody. Thanks for being here and taking this case. I, I would just hope that we'd be able to maybe do some of the landscape, getting some of the trees out of there. I do also own 15 Bay Berry Lane, and I mean, every single summer, there's construction going on, including next to me at 20, this is 21, Bay Berry Lane. So I, I thought that was interesting that they would try to block any construction. As far as whether or not construction itself would start before September 1st, that's, maybe Peter can speak to that in terms of builder, but before anything can happen, I think the house needs to come down and the, the trees need to be taken care of. That's my two cents.
Yeah, if I could add to that, I think the reality is between our completing the drawings, right now, we have sort of schematic drawings, we're trying to get approval from the, from the boards, and it'll take us some time to put it together, then it'll take some time to get, go through Town Hall. So I suspect it will be September before we start, but we don't, certainly don't want to agree that we will absolutely be done by next May. I mean, we will certainly endeavor to do so, like everybody does, but.
I, I think I just, I just wanted to air the topic.
Okay.
And if, I also am not in favor of stopping construction next season, but if, but if you were able to say, there's very little likelihood or no likelihood that we're going to be rolling trucks before September 1st, that sort of like.
Other than the, removing some of the trees and preparing.
Preparing work.
Preparing to start construction ultimately. We're going to have to get that, take that building down, and then there's always a little bit of preparing to make that happen. But of course, you don't take a building down until you got a building permit. It's a unwise thing to do.
Right.
Okay? So that, that will, I can't really say how that'll play out.
Okay. I think as long as you agree, and you have agreed, to put up that fence along that footpath to protect whoever is walking on that path, probably a lot of kids this summer, that the rest of it can.
And I'll also add, I step, I step all the time myself. I walk my dogs around, that's my loop, so it behooves me to keep it clear, and it behooves me to keep it safe from.
Yes, when I was, when I was there, about four or five days ago, I ran into a man who lives on Cranberry Lane, and he was walking his dog, and he had come up that pathway, so.
Yeah.
Everybody in that neighborhood.
I'm on the cause.
Seems, seems to use it, just so we keep the, you put the fencing up so we keep the kids and, and the people, the builders and the trucks and, you know, that they're not encroaching there.
I think the only we would ask is that rather than say it has to be, the fence has to be at the, at the easement line, that we have some discretion to place that fence that clearly delineates and separates the right-of-way from the construction job.
Sure.
But in a place that makes sense for us in terms of, of the vegetation.
Yes, yes, just so something is there and posted[1615.88] Yes, yes, just so something is there and posted or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Now can we go to propose? Nope, another, I'm sorry. Do we have somebody else waiting to speak?
No, Laura.
That's someone on the phone, I think.
Yes, yeah, I can't read that number.
Whoever you are on the phone, it also appears you're muted.
They raised their hand.
Eight-six-zero number.
Uh, we, me.
Is there anyone else waiting to speak to the board, please?
All right. You might just not.
I'll say, I have no idea how to use Zoom, but they're dialed in, so it's possible they've raised their hand and muted themselves on accident, or possible that they don't know how to unmute themselves.
Hello?
Yes, hello.
There we are, there we are, we hear you.
I'm terribly sorry. I wasn't able to, to log in via the Zoom that would take the number, so I've called in. This is Donna Monroe at 14 Beach Plum, and unfortunately, I joined the meeting a little late, so I apologize if you're going to have to repeat yourself. But one of the concerns I did hear mentioned, and one of my neighbors here in the neighborhood was also concerned about, was the construction work during the summer. And I just want to reiterate the fact, and I think those of you that have toured the property and been down Beach Plum Lane, recognize it's a narrow road, it's full of potholes, and particularly during the summer, there's a lot of traffic and a lot of foot traffic as well as along the right-of-way, which you just discussed. So to the extent that you can, with whatever construction, demolition, tree removal that you expect to take place during the peak traffic month, that you're very careful about the pedestrian and vehicle traffic and try to minimize congestion on this road. It's bad enough as it is off-season, which, as I said during the planning board meeting, is, is regular with homeowners, delivery trucks, repair trucks, dump trucks, garbage trucks. I mean, it's constant, and anybody who's seen the road knows that the, the potholes speak to that, that issue, which probably only get worth with this construction. So to the extent that you can minimize the impact on the residents and summer visits and so forth with the, with the right-of-way and the road, that would be very much appreciated in welcoming our new neighbor, Karen Johnson, to the, to the neighborhood.
Thank you for that comment, and we have been discussing that and ways to try to, to take care of those problems.
I appreciate that. I'm sure the others do as well. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak to us?
No.
All right. If no one else has anything to say to the board, I'm going to close the public segment of the case here, and we're going to read the proposed findings of fact. Justin will do that for us.
Can we go through this whole bit here? Yeah. Okay. The zoning board of appeals finds that the property is located at 15 Beach Plum Lane, map 13, parcel 184, and is located in District A residential. Number two, the applicant has applied for a special permit pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section 19.2, nonconforming uses buildings and structures, and Section 7.2.4, setback requirements to demolish the existing dwelling and build a new two-story residential dwelling. Property is pre-existing, nonconforming to minimum rear and side yard setbacks. Number three, the existing structure is pre-existing, nonconforming to the north property line at 24.2 feet, where 25 feet is required, to the south setback at 22.9 feet, where 25 feet is required, and to the west setback, Cranberry Lane, 15.3 feet away, where 30 feet is required. The east setback is conforming, that's Beach Plum Lane, 53.7 feet, where 30 feet is required. The proposed structure on the north side will result in a 12.2-foot intensification of the nonconformity with the proposed rinse area deck at 12 feet, where 25 feet is required.
Wait, wait.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's, that's fine.
Do you have the right version?
What's the date on yours?
Oh, goodness, did I grab it out of the wrong pile?
You did, yeah. You want the one dated.
Six-four.
Date, no, date May, I'm looking at date May 30th.
Nope, six-four.
Oh, oh, that was the new one that was sitting on my table here.
Hence the update.
Hence the update.
I think you were fine.
Let's see, yeah, I'll see what we got. We were good there, we're good, number two. All right, we're, we're on item number three here, fact number three.
Yes.
The hearing, and I was so happy with myself, forgetting all the chapters and sections right, and then just blowing this, wow.
You were doing a great job, yes, you were.
Fact number three, the hearing was continued to June 6, 2024, to provide time for redesign in consideration of concerns from board members and abutting property owners. Now, number four, the existing structure is pre-existing, nonconforming to the north property line at 24.2 feet, where 25 feet is required, to the south setback, 22.9 feet, where 25 feet is required, and to the west setback, Cranberry Lane, at 15.3 feet, where 30 feet is required. The east setback is conforming, that's Beach Plum Lane, 53.7 feet, where 30 feet is required. The proposed structure on the north side will result in a 4.2-foot intensification of the nonconformity, with the proposed dwelling at 20 feet, where 25 feet is required. The proposed structure on the south side will reduce the nonconformity by 1.1 feet, with the removal of the proposed attached shed resulting in a 24-foot setback where 25 feet is required. The proposed structure of the deck on the west side will result in a 0.1-foot intensification of the nonconformity, with the proposed deck at 15.4 feet, where 30 feet is required from the Cranberry Lane setback. The proposed structure will remain conforming on the east side, where the proposed structure will be 33 feet from Beach Plum Lane, where 30 feet is required. The proposed structure will be 25.5 feet high and will comply with the 30-foot height limit as enumerated in Section 22 of the Eastham Zoning Bylaw. Fact number five, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, this site is adequate for the proposed use in terms of size of the proposed structure or use. The lot was created in 1941 and is pre-existing, nonconforming to minimum lot size at 8,583 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required. The lot is typical for Beach Plum Lane, which has multiple lots of similar size and shape. The average lot size of the abutting properties within a 300-foot radius is 12,400 square feet. The maximum site coverage permitting under Zoning Bylaw, Section 7.4.3, site coverage standards is 1,717 square feet, or 20% of the lot size. The proposed site coverage is 1,671 square feet, 19.5%. Fact number six, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the site is suitable for the proposed structure or use with regard to the purpose and intent of the zoning district. The existing residential use is permitted in the residential zoning district. The proposal does provide adequate management of traffic flow and minimizes unsafe and harmful impacts within the site, as well as in relation to adjoining streets and properties. A formalized gravel driveway with a parking and a K-turn space is proposed to accommodate onsite parking and maneuvering. Fact eight, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented, the proposed structure is compatible with surrounding land uses so as to minimize harmful impact or conflict with existing desirable neighborhood character, including views, vistas, and other aesthetic values. The applicant revised the proposed architectural design to better fit the overall character of the neighborhood per the following. Prevailing character, the area that comprises the 300-foot abuttee radius, including Beach Plum Lane, Bayberry Lane, and Cobbett Lane, contains an eclectic mix of dwellings containing cottages and single-family structures in a range of sizes and architectural styles. On the north side, the roof deck was removed and no other changes. On the south side, 12 windows were removed from the second floor and first floor windows, and the windows were altered to improve privacy. On the east side, Beach Plum Lane, the roof line was simplified, a number of second-floor windows reduced from four, number of second-floor windows reduced, oh, and four, four windows were removed, the second-floor deck was removed. The exterior deck rail remains for aesthetic purpose with no interior egress. And on the west side, the rear of the house, the roof line was simplified and seven windows were removed. Addressing height and scale, the roof line was reconfigured and simplified. The maximum ridge height was reduced from 57 to 54.1 feet, and the roof deck and exterior spiral staircase were removed. Regarding massing, the tower element on the north, south, and west sides was removed to reduce overall massing and reduce the number of windows. And regarding building materials, no detrimental issues have been identified. The proposed structure will utilize traditional building materials common throughout the neighborhood, including clapboard siding, asphalt roofing, and double-hung windows. Now, fact number nine, the proposal does have adequate methods of sewage disposal, sources of potable water, and site drainage. The site has an existing Title V septic system. The property is connected to the Eastham Municipal Water System. A condition of approval will require review and, if needed, approval from the Eastham Board of Health for compliance with applicable Title V regulations. Fact number 10, the proposal does provide adequate protection and maintenance of groundwater quality and recharge volume and the water quality of coastal and fresh surface water bodies. The site is not located within any resource areas. Conservation Commission approval is not required. No detrimental issues have been identified related to degradation or alteration of the natural environment involving slopes and other topographical features, vegetation, wetlands, and wildlife habitat. Fact 11, the proposal does provide adequate provision for utilities and other necessary or desirable public services. The site is served by electrical, telephone, cable, and data services adequate for residential use. No detrimental issues have been identified. Fact 12, artificial light, noise, litter, odor, or other sources of nuisance or inconvenience will be adequately controlled. A condition of approval will require all exterior lights to be downshielded to reduce light spill onto adjacent properties. The number of windows has been reduced to mitigate impact of light spill impacting the surrounding area. The roof deck and front second-floor decks have been removed to reduce potential nuisance issues to abutting properties. Fact 13, the proposal does provide adequate protection from degradation and alteration of the natural environment. The site is not located within any resource areas. No negative impacts were identified. Fact number 14, after an evaluation of all the evidence presented and based on the finding of fact, the proposed alteration to the pre-existing, nonconforming cottage will not.
Should we say, we're not talking alteration here, we're talking a whole new building? Paul?
Yeah, that was oversized.
Okay, so the proposed. Two-story, the proposed two-story dwelling will not be.
While we're, while we're picking these apart, actually, I had a question on this particular one before. This says substantially more detrimental. There was some language elsewhere in the packet that just said more detrimental. Is, I assume in the finding of facts here, substantially more detrimental is the, is the right phrasing? And is the standard that we're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the proposed construction of a new.
Is it demolition and construction? Are we only concerned?
Yeah, that's, okay, that, okay, the proposed demolition.
Yeah, just, just.
Say replacement.
Keep, keep it simple.
The proposed replacement.
The, okay, proposed repla- replacement of the two-story dwelling with a.
Still type to the other person.
It's a one-story building, right?
The old one's one, the new one's two.
Okay, the proposed replacement of.
Construction of.
The one-story building with a new
demolition.
Two-story Story dwelling All right, so, so we, I have for number 14, the proposed replacement of the pre-existing nonconforming cottage will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Yes. Period.
Right. Doug?
That's right.
We need, I need a motion to approve the findings of fact as revised.
I'm moved that we approve the motions. Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion pass. Okay.
Madam Chair, the.
Yes.
Condition, it's up to you, your discretion, if you want to read these conditions, one through 10 are the standard conditions, which the, Mr. Zender has a copy of. The, so, your discretion if you want to read them, otherwise, the, either items addressing the construction fencing and those, if you want to.
We should add, yes, we should.
Eleven, yeah.
It's in 11.
We're fine with a waiver if we're reading the standard conditions.
Okay, we've, and we've got that here.
Great school again.
He's good.
Yeah, thank you. Don't disrespect intended of anybody.
Okay.
So you're going to do that?
Sure. Proposed conditions, so we will waive the, with the applicant's permission, we will waive the, the initial 10 of the proposed conditions that are documented here within.
We'll waive, waive the reading of them, I think.
Reading of them, yes, thank you.
Okay.
And we will read, condition number 11 will be that the applicant shall install construction fencing along the north property line, demarking the right-of-way slash footpath, and install appropriate signage to prevent any construction activity or storage of materials in the way of such footpath. Parking of vehicles related to construction is prohibited along Beach Plum Lane of travel.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the conditions?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right. I now need a motion to either approve or deny the request for a special permit for 15 Beach Plum Lane.
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve ZBA 24, 2024-02 for the demolition and construction at 15 Beach Plum Lane as presented.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Thank you all for all your service to the town. They love.
Thank you.
Did you second it?
I second it.
Okay. I move that someone come clean up all this paper for me.
Now, not to be midvictory, on that number 14.
Yeah.
If he puts the fence on the property line, he's going to be doing it right down the middle of the path.
Mm-hmm.
He did.
I think we understand what.
Yeah, I know, that's why I didn't, that's why I didn't jump on it.
I know, neither.
Right. Right.
Oh, you did say that's seven oh five.
Yeah, whatever.
Right. It'll be fine.
Just behave yourself.
I think they, I think they understand.
All right.
Okay, Joanne, you're in charge.
Here we go. Our second case tonight is case number ZBA 2024-4, 365 Harms Way. Map one, parcel 111. Top Gun Realty LLC is the owner. Joseph and Julie Evans are the applicants. They seek a variance from zoning by law, Section 21, definitions, maximum building height, pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 10, to demolish an existing two- an existing two-story dwelling and build a new two-story dwelling on piers in order to comply with current flood plain building code requirements where the proposed building will exceed the thirty-foot building in height limit. And a vote will be taken seated on this case, Doug Byrd, Bob Sheldon, Martin Ridge, Justin Kennington, and myself. And are we back to you, Mr. Zender?
Thank you, Madam Chair, again, I'm Ben Zender, and I'm here on behalf of Joe and Julie Evans, who are the owners of the property at three sixty-five harms way. Their project architect, Peter Higgin, is still sitting next to me. And this is, this is what I would call a classic variance application. This property is located in a wetland resource, a coastal, I believe it's a coastal dune, which, and it's also located in what we call a V-zone, a velocity flood zone, which means that in order to meet the current state building code requirements, you have to construct a structure so that the lowest horizontal member of livable floor area is two feet above the base flood elevation. John O'Reilly's prepared a great site plan here, the base flood elevation here is at elevation fifteen feet above mean sea level, which means that the lowest horizontal member has to be at elevation seventeen feet. Peter has designed this house so that the insulation of the utilities et cetera in the bottom of the house that normally would be in your basement take up two and a half feet, which puts the first floor elevation at elevation nineteen point five, two and a half feet above that seventeen feet. You know, typically, you wouldn't have to do that if you had a foundation, you put this stuff on the other floor, but you have to do it here to protect the home and make it livable. So your zoning code requires that houses, homes can't be any, or structures can't have a ridge height of more than thirty feet above average, the average ground elevation at the side of the home. There is a set of calculations on the plan, which, when you boil them down, the elevation, the average ground elevation is at elevation eight point nine, meaning eight point nine feet above mean sea level, which means that the highest ridge height that would be allowable under your zoning code is at elevation thirty-eight point nine, yeah, thirty feet. This proposal is at forty-two point five, it's roughly, I think it's three point six feet above, and the reason for that is to, is because the house has to be listed to meet those floods and elevations. So essentially, you have to lift the house eight point one feet above the elevation of eight point nine to get to your seventeen, so you're already losing eight point nine feet in terms of having to lift it up. You pick up a little bit of that, and the fact that foundation is usually a couple feet out of the ground, but this house, when you measure it from the ridge height down to the, to the, to the level of the, of the lowest elevation, it's twenty-five point five feet in height, the house is twenty-five point five feet high, of which two and a half feet of that is, is what's necessary to get the insulation of the utilities in the bottom of the house, so it's essentially twenty-three feet, it's a twenty-three foot tall structure. So when you boil all those numbers down, it's pretty clear that the, the reason that at eighteen point five and a base flood elevation of fifteen, so that, which included in the design that two and a half feet for the construction of the home, so they approved the lowest horizontal member at sixteen feet.
Okay.
They approved at sixteen, so.
That was in, that was in May, right?
That was in May, so they approved at sixteen, we then submitted to you at sixteen, but then thankfully, with Paul's help, we identified that we had to meet the V-zone requirement, so we, we altered the design to lift it up one more foot.
To seventeen.
To seventeen, which puts us at nineteen point five. I think what we need to do is we need to go back to the Conservation Commission administratively and ask them to amend our approval to have the seventeen. If it's possible, I don't think it's likely, it's possible the commission will look at this and say, whoa, 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 wait a minute, we want you to lift this house three more feet. I doubt they will, because we, we have a, say somewhat a difference here. If they do, we're gonna have to come back to you and ask to amend your plan to add, I, I don't see it happening, but theoretically, that's possible. So what I'm going to ask this board to do is approve this subject to an approval by the Conservation Commission of, of, of the elevation of the structure.
Aren't we putting the cart before the horse?
You are, except, they've already approved it, they've approved it, I, I just can't, and look, we bear the risk of having to come back and ask you to amend it, you don't. We can't, we can't get a building permit until we have both. I just, you know, I just can't conceive of the Conservation Commission coming back and wanting to lift this house up even higher. I just don't see it, I mean, it's not like this house is down where there's no migration of the dune, so.
May I add something to that?
Sure.
Yes, essentially, the bottom line is, is we made a mistake, and we discovered it with the help of Paul, that what we got approved, that is my office and our, and working with the engineers, so it's on us. I will say, though, when we were with Conservation, their focus wasn't on the discussion of height particularly, most of their emphasis was on plants and what we were gonna do for grading and all of the things that related to the ground. I would be surprised if they have trouble with it, they would probably want all these agencies to, to sync up in terms of their requirements, but that would be my sense. So I'm, you know, we're cautious about going back to Conservation, because you don't like to have to go back and say, look, we made a mistake, but I think that's the bottom line. And had we known that, what we know now, we would have gone and gotten approval with the bottom structure at seventeen.
Well, while you're there, I don't know if this, if you need an approval for this from Conscom as well, but the shed on the property, you, you want to keep the shed, right?
We're proposing a shed, they approved the shed, yeah.
Yes, but you can't leave it on the ground.
Yes, you can. It's habitable floor area, the flood, the flood zone requirements apply to habitable floor and nut storage structures.
Paul?
They, the shed, per NFIP standards, needs to be elevated or floodproofed.
Or floodproofed.
So if you want to floodproof a shed.
That's, yeah, but that's, that's a building code issue.
But that's, it needs to be floodproof or elevated, and if you're gonna elevate it, you're gonna be back talking about that with Conscom. And also, I will note, and this is in the staff report, you're gonna have to discuss with Conscom the propane tank.
We understand.
You can't, you can't bury it, the propane tank.
Well, I think you can't bury it, unless it's a replacement.
Why not? Propane tanks are buried.
If it's a replacement, you can, but I believe there's no propane tank, and this exact issue played out with the house next door, and they had to come up with a creative solution to that, but, because you can't bury the propane tank in the.
But again, those are conservation issues, those aren't.
Well, that, I mean, that's a building code issue, but you're gonna have to resolve it with.
I think you need to take up these two things as well.
I, we, we certainly do, but what I would ask this board to do is to approve this, you know, and we bear the risk, look, if the Conservation comes back and says, you have to build something other than what you're approving today, we bear the risk of coming back and asking you to approve it again, so we can't get a building permit without it, so.
All right, Ben, just tell us what you'd like us to approve.
We would like you to approve this as previously, with a condition that it's subject to Conservation approval.
What's the new height, that's my point.
The new height is as shown on the plan that's presented, forty-two point five.
Okay, forty-two point five, okay. And that includes the, the extra foot because of the loss.
That includes the extra foot, exactly, yes.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that's, that's what they want, right there. Can I add one other thing that we, I'd love to just say, in terms of our intent, in, in terms of establishing the height of this house, was that we actually surveyed the two adjacent houses, and the intent was to be at the median between the two, the average of the two, from a site plan point of view, and the first, the, and we are, and that was the point, even with the adjustment of one foot, we're still in, in kind of, just in between the two of them, and that was part of what that illustration was intended to show, that we felt like we were fitting in with the neighborhood, and that was our intent.
This, this picture, though?
Yes.
It says forty-one point five, it should say forty-two.
Well, yeah, now it's forty-two point five.
Forty-two, okay.
Oh, I got, I got a forty-two point five one.
Yeah, okay.
So if you go back to Conservation Commission, is it, could be lower, not higher, is that right?
I don't see Conservation lowering it, I mean, you know, Conservation, ideally, they want structures elevated to allow for natural migration of the dunes.
Right.
So, you know, it's possible they will feel that this house doesn't adequately allow for, I, I believe that it does. So, you know, if, let's say, for example, the Conservation Commission says, we're gonna want you to elevate this to a, a lowest elevation horizontal, instead of seventeen feet, nineteen feet, we're gonna have to come back to you and ask you to amend the application to, or, or we're gonna have to redesign the house to break it down on the top side.
So what would it be if they tell you to raise it? It's currently at forty-two point five.
Depends how much they do, it depends how much they tell you to raise it, so, you know, for every foot they tell you to raise it, the house goes up a foot, assuming you don't redesign the house, so.
Right, right, okay. Just to clarify, the final, the final ridge height would be forty-two point five feet?
Yes.
And that's gonna result in a X number, what's, what's the, what's the final number? What's the variance number?
The variance number at forty-two point five from thirty-nine point eight, it'd be three point six, I believe.
That's what I have, I have three point five.
So you want a three point five foot.
You had the average grade at nine feet, was eight point nine.
Okay, so you want a three point five foot variance on the, on the town rules, on the town, right?
Three point six feet.
Right, right, in consideration of Conservation and putting enough on the, so, that's, I think we're in the good, we're in a good place. My question was, you mentioned the migration of the dune and so forth, is there a limitation from Conservation or anyone else on putting skirting or anything else around the piers in the lower section of the building?
Yes.
Because the recommendations from the Cape Cod Commission for building along on piers was that that's piers was that that stays open, both as a view corridor and for the wind to go through and the sand to migrate. So that's gonna be left open?
Yes. We also, as you will see on the plan, John O'Reilly proposed, and they really liked this idea of, of replacing a portion of the dune that had been scoured in the past.
I saw that, yeah.
And, uh, so that's, they were really pleased with the, the total package.
And that new dune, just to be clear, does, it does not calculate into the average grade calculations?
I, I honestly don't know the answer to that.
I don't think it does.
I don't think so.
I think it's averaging, it's averaging.
I, I, I checked on it.
I wish it did, but it doesn't.
Depends how long it's been there.
So what's the total variance they're wanting?
Two point six feet.
Three point six.
Oh, sorry, three point six.
Three point six.
There's a lot of numbers up here.
Yeah.
Right. Um, very good. Uh, other question we had was, there's an elevator shaft in the house, I don't know if that's for the future. Is there a plan for that to come all the way down to the ground level?
Yes.
So is this what I'm seeing, a shaft come down?
I can see it on the, uh, in the elevation slightly because it's in the middle of the structure.
Okay.
And we have to do that according to FEMA regulations. That, that has to be constructed according to there, which is somewhat extensive in what they tell you to do.
And you can bring that down to ground level?
I was surprised at that myself, but yeah, yes, there.
So the house is up on stilts and the hurricane comes and the elevator can't go somewhere, right?
Don't be in the elevator, for sure.
First thing to go up, sure.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so where are we, Joanne?
Well, I was going to ask the individual board members here, how do you feel about this, folks, approving before they get their other approvals from the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, but the difference is, to, in my mind, is only a foot between what, the way Conservation might go and what this is. And this is, as, as Ben mentioned, this is a classic variance situation.
Yes, it is.
I mean, it's, it's no doubt that we have a situation other than what's normal.
Right.
Classic.
Right. So I, I, I think the overall height of the house is only twenty-something feet, twenty-four, twenty-five feet, so I think, I think I'm okay with it. I think it's almost de minimis that they're going back to Conservation to adjust that one foot for an oversight related to velocity zones. I'd be okay with approving tonight.
Doug?
Yeah, I would too. I, I, my, my concern was the height of the house compared to the houses next to it, and I think aesthetically it fits right in, so I don't have any concerns.
It does, yes. And Justin?
Yeah, I think it makes sense, as, as they said, it's, if, if Conservation comes back and says, raise it another eight feet, certainly they're gonna have to come back to us, but that's, that's, that's their problem.
That's not gonna go through.
Okay.
It's not my problem, I get paid, I get paid for the hour, but it's still Julie's problem, so, yeah.
All right. We, we do, I think we do want to add, uh, somewhere in here, possibly the, in the conditions, that.
Where is that? That over here.
That the, um, shed is going to be either floodproofed or raised.
Well, I, 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 they have to be building code on the shed, so, you know, I, I'm taking it face value to Paul's comments about what the building requirements are for sheds, I wasn't aware of those, but I, I don't think you need to impose a condition as to the building code requirements for building a shed.
This is, our, our whole discussion should be about the height of the main structure. Everything else has to do with Justin.
I agree with that.
The only thing, just, if for some, sorry to interrupt, that.
Yeah.
I agree. It's just, if you decide to elevate the shed, well, actually, I just got reminded of something. It's two things. If you decide to elevate the shed and then that is gonna be a height issue, then obviously we're back to this.
If it, yeah, if it's gonna be nonconforming in some way, I'd, yes, I agree.
But the, um, the shed is, on the site plan, eight feet from the lot line, and it has to be a minimum of twelve feet for the height of the structure.
Right.
So this goes back to, if it's on the ground, it's gotta be however tall the shed is, and obviously if you're gonna elevate it, we're back to like this other.
Understood, yeah, we understand, yeah.
So once you're elevated, it has to move from the prop, from the.
It'll change, it'll change the setback requirement.
So, I guess I would recommend that there be a condition, the only thing I would recommend at this point is the shed is to meet.
Get it away from the.
Minimum setback requirements.
Yes, and that would be twelve feet, you said?
Right, and then anything else is gonna fall under the building, uh, building regulations.
So, so we could put that into the conditions, that you're going to move that shed twelve feet from the lot, property lot line? And you're not going.
It's gonna be the minimum of twelve for the height of the struc, I don't know how high this is.
It's gonna hold it to the height of the structure.
How tall is this shed? I don't know.
What is the setback? That's what it is. I'm sorry, can't read it.
Yeah, I, 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 look, as I sit here tonight, I, I'm not sure whether it's compliant or not, so I, I, I'm not asking you to bless a noncompliant shed in any way, shape, or form, so I think you can make a condition that the shed has to meet the zoning requirements for setbacks.
Yeah, that's it.
Would that solve your problem, Paul?
Any future shed, because it's a proposal at this point.
Sounds good.
Would be required to meet.
Which it has to be any.
Here again, maybe just some technical questions for me, but I sort of don't understand the relevance of the shed and, and saying something like, the shed has to meet the, the zoning requirements, isn't that, isn't it already understood and implied that the shed would have to meet zoning requirements? And, and what does that have to do with this variance?
It's just the fact, it's just the fact that.
Or is it just, you came here and, so we're gonna say.
It's shown on the site, it's shown on the site plan, two feet too close to the sideline right now.
Okay, okay. Fair, but here, again, I'm, I'm just trying to dig in and help myself understand, so, anybody slow me down who wants to?
See, we're just trying to make sure that it isn't interpreted as a blessing of a nonconformity.
Okay, okay, there you go. I guess it's just a statement, this is, we're, we're only talking about the height here, that shed is its own thing.
Right, right. Because if it was a setback requirement, the next door neighbor hasn't been notified, it wouldn't be fair to approve it.
We're, we're making it clear that, I think what you just said, we're making it clear that we're not blessing any nonconformity that may or may not exist on the shed in this drawing. We're just here to say that the building height is cool.
And the propane tank is.
I, I don't think that's a issue for the zoning board. I was bringing up just as a reference, but that, that'll be handled through the Conscom and through the, uh, building.
Permit.
Building permit and the.
Okay.
Construction requirements.
We haven't even talked about the material that's gonna be supporting the house yet.
Of the pipe.
That was a joke. Because the, the house next door, they got built with wrong materials.
Don't go there, sister.
These are African mahogany pilings.
Okay.
You know, if I, if I may, just to go back to the plan, um, the shed is twelve feet from the property line. There's a, there's a contour line right there that says eight, but if you look carefully at the plan.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I looked at that the other day.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, you can see the contour line.
You can see the twelve foot.
Twelve, ten, eight, yeah, 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 but now you have the double edged, now you have the double, double pointed arrow with an eight next to it.
No, that eight is a con, that's the eight for contour line. Look below the lot line, it says twelve point zero.
Yes, it does, there is twelve feet, okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
All right.
Okay.
My architect just informed me of that, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, fair enough, no issue then.
All right.
Okay, so, are we ready to go to proposed findings of fact? And if so, Doug, would you like to read them?
Sure, I'm not sure I can do as good a job as, uh, was done before, but I'll, I'll do my best.
Do you have the latest version?
I, well, I'm, I think there's only one version, right?
Yeah.
Yes, for this one.
Yeah, I would just recommend we just, we add in, we add in one that just specifies the final ridge height and the resulting variance height.
What number is that, Paul?
I didn't.
I thought it was forty-two point five would be the final height.
Yeah, I just, I didn't put a finding.
Yes.
To state.
And what is the number that should be inserted in number five, the Conservation Commission approval?
Well, that's.
That's a question mark.
That's the tricky bit here, isn't it?
Well, no, they did it, they did approve something.
Yeah.
So we should know, we know what that number is, right?
It should be seventeen.
So this is not gonna be accurate, so we have to reword it, because they approved eighteen point five, but that was, that was the first floor elevation, not the lowest horizontal structure member.
They, they approved seventeen feet.
So I'm looking at this plan here.
I, I can represent, they, they approved the lowest horizontal structural member at sixteen feet.
Right.
All right, but that doesn't meet.
I know, but if, if this is.
I guess they could, they, they can't do that because then that doesn't meet.
It's a finding of fact, yeah, I.
I, I, I understand, I just wanna get the numbers right, because if anyone.
I'll give you, my interpretation of the numbers are, this is the plan I have for May sixth, top of the, top of the structure on this one says forty-one point five, we know you're asking for forty-two five, this one says bottom of the beam is sixteen, so if this is going up a foot, the bottom of the beam goes up a foot. So my reading of this is at the bottom of the beam, if we're going to approve a house at forty-two five, the bottom of the beam, per your drawings, would be seventeen feet.
That's true.
So if we put seventeen feet in here on the findings, is that, is everybody in agreement with that?
But that's not what the Conservation Commission approved.
The Conservation Commission approved.
But they allowed it.
We have to, according to what this says, we, we're.
Maybe what we wanna say is that our variance of forty-two point five is conditioned on Conservation approving seventeen?
I could suggest.
Why don't you make it two sentences?
Well, I could suggest that, you could say the Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions getting to mention at sixteen feet, comma, however, the applicant is going to be required to seek an amendment of that to be consistent with this application.
Something like that.
Okay.
Right, right.
However.
Of sixteen feet.
So you're asking for seventeen feet.
Exactly, yes.
They approved sixteen and you're asking for.
We're asking for seventeen.
Okay. In number two, while we're fiddling around with things, number two in the proposed findings says that the applicant has applied for a variance to alter, raise, and relocate. The applicant has applied for a variance to demolish an existing two-story structure and build a new two-story structure on piers.
Madam Chair, if I could be heard on that?
Sure.
Um, and Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, because this is going back quite a ways, but I believe your local bylaw includes a replacement in the definition of an alteration. So when you say to alter, raise, and relocate, I think that would subsume within it a removal and replacement of existing structure.
Is it okay if I'm, wanna be literal?
No, I understand, I'm just saying, I just, I just heard that come up before and I, I'd had the thought before, I couldn't hear it twice, but.
But, as, as I was reading this for like the fourteenth time this afternoon, I thought, wait, no, I, I would rather have demolish.
Which one is, which one is that, Joanne?
This is number two in the findings. The applicant, instead of alter, raise, and relocate.
The point is, this is what they're actually doing, but another way of saying that is demolish and rebuild.
It's fine, you just use the language that's in the legal ad.
Meaning? Leave that alone?
No.
Not the legal.
It was to demolish an existing two-story dwelling and build a new two-story dwelling on piers.
Yes.
I, I meant to, that's what should've been in there.
Okay.
I should've copied and pasted it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Good answer.
Okay. Doug?
So what are we changing two to? So we're saying that to demolish?
Take out, take out to alter, raise, and relocate.
Yeah.
And substitute demolish an existing two-story dwelling.
See this sentence right here?
And build.
Existing dwelling, no two-story.
This is what's in, in the advertisement.
Yeah, existing dwelling.
To demolish an existing and build a new two-story dwelling.
Demolish an existing dwelling.
Okay. Got it.
And build a new two-story dwelling on piers.
Piers.
Got it, okay.
Okay, can I get my pages back?
Can I read it first and then you can have it?
Yes, of course. I'll even give you front, first page.
Okay, we'll try and, just if I can do this. Um, the zoning board of appeals finds that one, the property is lo, the property is located at three sixty-five Harms Way, map one parcel one eleven, and is located in the residential zoning district. Applicant has applied for a variance pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty A, Section ten, from Eastham Zoning Bylaw, Section Roman three, to demolish an existing two-story dwelling and build a new two-story dwelling on piers in violation of the building height allowance in order to comply with flood zone building elevation requirements. The site is located within the FEMA Special Flood Zone Area VE- velocity zone. The site is also located within the one hundred-foot buffer that is a resource area and is subject to Conservation Commission review. Massachusetts State Building Code seven eighty C M R fifty-one point zero zero R three two two point four point four elevation requirements requires that the elevation of the lowest horizontal structure member of the lowest floor of the proposed structure be determined by the local Conservation Commission through an order of the conditions and in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act. Five, the Eastham Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions containing a determination of the elevation of the lowest horizontal structure member of the proposed structure of sixteen feet, provided however that the applicant shall be required to an main, to obtain an amendment to the approved order of conditions to increase the lowest horizontal structure member of the proposed structure to at least seventeen feet. Number six, there are not circumstances related.
There are.
There are, I'm sorry, there are circumstances related to shape, topography, and soil conditions of the land and structure. The site is located within the FEMA Special Flood Hazard Area and is subject to the effects of flooding, flooding, storm surge, erosion, and other environmental issues. These issues are related to the elevation of the existing structure, the topography of the lot, the proximity of the structure and of the lot to the adjacent water body, Cape Cod Bay, and to the soil conditions of the site. Although all of the properties located in Harms Way are located within the S F H A, and are subject to similar environmental conditions, the same conditions do not impact the entire residential zoning district. Seven, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would involve a substantial hardship. Any work proposed of the existing structure that meets the definition of a substantial hardship would require the structure to be elevated to at least the minimum height required to comply with the pertinent state and federal regulations. Number eight, desirable relief may not be granted, may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the zoning ordinance. Elevating the structure would allow the proposed, proposal to comply with pertinent state and federal construction requirements. It would also provide the better protection to the, both the subject site and the surrounding area for future flooding by allowing the flood zone to function in a more natural and beneficial manner. Zero butters parties of, in interest appeared in favor and zero appeared in opposition of the proposal, zero letters were received in favor and zero in opposition.
Okay. May I have a motion to a.
As I mentioned, I would just recommend adding another finding to state what the final ridge height and what the variance is.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
How are you wording that, Paul?
Uh, just, uh, the final, final ridge height for the proposed structure will be forty-two point five feet, resulting in a three point six-foot variance to the height requirement, height limit.
So the final ridge height of, of the proposed.
Final ridge height would be forty-two point five feet, requiring a three point six foot variance to the Eastham building height regulation.
So the proposed maximum ridge height for the proposed, for the proposal shall be forty-two point five feet, requiring the granting of a three point six foot variance to the zoning requirement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine, thanks, Paul.
Thank you. May I have a motion to accept the findings of fact?
I move that we accept the findings of fact.
Okay, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five to nothing. All right, and Bob, would you read the proposed conditions, please?
Madam Chair, this, again, up to you if you want to read them, but.
Oh, okay.
One through.
One through ten?
One through eight.
Eight?
Are, one through nine are the standard conditions, number ten, I don't think we need anymore, because that was related to the shed.
Okay.
Number eleven is a standard condition, and I don't know if we, did we discuss a condition about the conservation?
We added, we added twelve, any future shed has to meet zoning requirements.
No, that, it does meet.
Okay, so we can scratch that too.
Yeah, the site plan is accurate.
We have the drawing, we have the wrong number.
Okay, right.
Yep.
And we would be fine with a condition that it's subject to approval by the Conservation Commission of the new elevation height.
Okay.
That's part of the conditions you want?
Well, I, I think it would, it would just, it would make it clear that what you're approving is not consistent with the previously approved conservation.
Okay, all right. How did you word that, then, any?
I'm sorry?
How did you, how were you wording?
Approval is subject to.
I would say, subject to approval by the Conservation Commission of the seventeen point zero foot.
At, at least, at least seventeen feet.
At least seventeen.
Right.
Lowest horizontal member elevation.
Yep.
That's because, that's because it's two feet high, because it's in the VE zone, it's the two feet above.
Base flood.
Base flood law.
Right.
I, I don't think we had to make our decision conditional on you getting that approval from Conservation.
We don't get building permit without it, so, yeah.
Because we rounded up on that, too.
I think, I think we're saying the forty-two point five is okay.
Yes, we've, we've just done that, yeah.
We've, we've given you that foot.
We're okay, we don't need that. You're right. Okay, now.
They make you raise it.
We don't have to read.
Well, if our ridge height, if our ridge height goes above what you've approved, we're coming back, I mean, I think that's kind of the way it boils down.
Okay, number nine, in the conditions, says the applicant shall file the special permit decision letter, I think we should say variance letter, rather than special permit. All right, so with that change, and we've eliminated ten, eleven, and we're not talking about, we're not adding the approval of the cons comm. So, so we, we're approving the nine conditions as printed?
It'll be ten, number eleven's still there.
Oh, right, right, and, and, okay.
You're right.
So number eleven becomes number ten.
Right.
So we're approving those ten conditions with the correction of special permit to variance. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes five to nothing. Could we now have a motion to approve case number CBA twenty twenty-four at three sixty-five Harms Way for a variance to demolish an existing two-story house and build a new two-story dwelling on piers in order to comply with flood plain building code requirements?
Well, hang on, this is a variance, we need to state what the variance is.
Right.
The variance is three point five feet or three point six feet.
Three point six feet. So it's really a motion to grant the variance, the variance to, from the zoning bylaw to three point six feet?
The rest of us is just.
I, I, I don't understand what you're trying to say.
Well, you're asking for a variance, we need to state what the variance is, the variance is three point six feet.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
Maybe that's just a short sentence, you know, be, after the.
Okay.
After the verbiage there, he has.
Okay.
The board, the zoning board of appeals granted a variance of three point six feet to the thirty-foot highest, building height limitation of the Eastham zoning bylaws.
I'm just going to add, after seek a variance, I'm going to add the three point six feet there.
Fine.
Okay, will that work?
If Ben's happy, I'm happy.
I'm always happy.
Okay.
Liar.
Yeah, thank you, well, thank you, right.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the granting of the variance?
I move that we approve the granting of the variance.
And may I have a second, Justin?
Second.
Thank you. Fine, you're sitting here, you get the vote now.
Hey, I was going to jump in.
All right, I'm going to do a roll call vote, Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
And me, yes, okay, so we have.
Thank you all.
An approval there, five to nothing.
This is the first time in my career I've gotten two height drawings in two towns in two nights.
Hey, wow, congratulations.
I mean, they were bothering me, these are, these are cases that just screamed out for it, but still.
Well, well, good for you.
Thank you all.
Good for you.
Thank you very much.
Variance is generally obvious or not, I mean, this was an obvious.
Okay.
I was in, I was in New Orleans, somebody was looking for a variance last night to build, put two apartments below grade level on, on a building, and the board just said, no.
Below grade level?
Yeah, the bylaw says no, no, no dwelling, no apartment below grade level, and they, the bylaw says no.
It's not like we're looking for housing or anything.
Thank you all, nice dealing.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Congratulations.
One last order of business here.
We have minutes, too.
We don't have any.